Sorry about that.
Beautiful. What was that? You have a radio station?
No, it's ESPN. I don't know. It just wanted, must have, when I moved the screen off to the side, I must have inadvertently hit the ESPN tab at the top of the screen. Sorry.
Stick with Time Inc. Okay, back to, back to business. Pete, you've called us.
I know that we approved the minutes for the, you can, you can take the screen back, Steve. We approved the minutes of the February meeting.
Uh, no.
Should you approve?
It's the March meeting. Anybody have a second? Please?
Second.
Anybody object?
We can't hear you right now.
And I guess we can say the, the, the minutes have been approved and we should go on from there, Steve.
Okay, so our next task is to talk budget actuals and finance report. We're actually right on time. So Doug, or anyone with the finance committee, you want to walk us through where we are? And then we'll take a few minutes to preview the budget which we'll want to approve at the next meeting.
Okay, give me one second. Let me just move this over to my screen. All right. So, just a high level. Similar to fire reports, nothing major. So this is going to be a few items that I want to point out. I want to start with our revenue at the top, the forty-one hundreds. We are closing the gap. We were a little under the road. We budgeted for, can you mute someone? I hear a lot of feedback. Um, I think it's Peter. Yeah. There we go. Better. We budgeted for four hundred and, we budgeted for four hundred and forty-five students. Currently, we have four twenty-five. Year-to-date, we're down seven thousand dollars, exactly sixty-nine fifty-six. And that, we were able to close the budget on the gap because we had, we over-enrolled in spad students. For the budget, we budgeted sixty-two, I believe, and we have currently eighty-eight high-cost students. I want to jump down to our federal grant line. Year-to-date, we are under eighty-nine thousand five hundred. We got less than what we budgeted for, for our Title I grant. It's exactly sixty-five thousand eight eighty-five. However, we are slated to get more other income from, from like title funding, from ESAR and our CARES grant. CARES grant was about a hundred and somewhere thousand dollars. It is not reflected in these numbers. And I just haven't put it in because we've been approved or we have not received any of those monies yet. So far as our revenues, we're going, we're looking strong. Once we put the CARES grant, the CARES money in, we will basically, essentially have more than what we budgeted. Um, there's not much to talk about when it comes to the expenditures. I just want to point out on the seventy-four hundreds with marketing and recruiting. And I'm going to focus on a year-to-date. Year-to-date, we are over eleven thousand five hundred. And that has to do with us starting our campaign to start recruiting for our students for next year. So it has a cost benefit for this year as well as next year. So we hit our target for whatever we decide to budget for child. Also, including that overage is our, our staff recruitment. ATS system, which is applicant tracking system, it renews in about March. So we pocket, we pocket in and, you know, that, that helped with the overage. But overall, it had to do with the student campaign. Any questions for revenue and expenses? From the board? Nope. All right. So if you slide down. So a quick look at where we are financially. Cash on hand, we are very strong at four point seven million. Our receivables are higher than where I would like them to be. I've been working with the federal government, which is our Title, Title I, Two, and Four. Somehow, they're moving pretty slow. There was a mix-up on their end with our paperwork. So, in the next few weeks, we should, the receivable line should decrease drastically. And we should have our money and that will be reflected in another, another line. But overall, you know, with all our current assets, we have four point nine million. Our fixed asset, if we look from the, not yet, from February to March, we bought a few more student laptops. So we see an increase in fixed assets. And as I go down to the last line that I want to highlight is our current liabilities at one point nine million. The biggest portion is our PPP loan. The auditor who was on our file is no longer working with the auditing company. She moved on. So there's been a delay in picking up from where she was to have her application submitted. Reached out, our auditor reached out today. They had some questions for us. So, in the coming weeks, I should have more clarity on our application and hopefully it would be submitted. I was told it's partially done. They just wanted to tweak it to ensure that we, basically, they can basically assure a hundred percent forgiveness. So that's it. Any questions from our ballot? Nope. Great.
So Doug, I can support and start walking through the, some of the highlights of the budget and then you can, you and Edward and others can chime in. So, the finance committee or the board charged us with looking at a few different scenarios and we are doing that. But we're only showing one. We're showing the base case that we want to approve at the next month's board meeting. And we're going to do some more work on it, get feedback now. Finance committee will meet at least once more, maybe twice more before the next board meeting. This is a case with the regular ninety-five percent enrollment. We also have a case called prelim two, which is not shown here with ninety-two percent enrollment. It would just be too much to see on the page where we can describe it. To be conservative. We assume expenses go up at the normal rate. Doug built in a little bit more of an inflator for healthcare because we're having hearing signals that health insurance is going up at a faster rate than it has been the last few years. So that's concerning. But we got a nice per people bump of four and a half percent, which is not what we expected and has made this process much, much easier. So essentially, we are going to be, you know, I would say it's almost splitting hairs with how we finalized this budget. Because without pandemic-related expenses, the budget is balanced. And even with a lower enrollment, if you take out pandemic-related expenses, the budget is balanced. So for future ongoing obligations in terms of expenses, we are in good shape. Assuming we have some semblance of enrollment push, which we expect to have, but obviously it's a top operational priority for the school. The, so the, let me just say one more thing and then we can take comments.
Steve, excuse me, Steve? I'm having the same problem again. Can you?
We can't hear?
Uh, this thing came back up, but I can't get to shut it off until you take it off the screen. I'm sorry.
All right.
I apologize.
I'll leave you for a minute and and then I'll try to un, hey, unshare. There you go. Okay, so you can't see the budget now, but trust me, there's a yellow line. And on the, in the yellow line, it says miscellaneous expenses. And the dollar amount there is two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I'm still hearing feedback, Doug. Can I try to mute? You unmute and see if you can. Sounds like surf, but it looks like, yeah, it's still here. Anybody else hear that surf sound?
Yeah.
I think it's Edward.
Are you at the beach, Edward?
No, that was Hallie. I mean, Lauren was at the beach.
Let's see if Edward, if you don't mind, I'm going to put you.
I'm trying to mute it. Yeah.
It's physically impossible. There you go. Okay. Hopefully that'll help things. I understand Coney Island is lovely right now. So in the miscellaneous expenses, we put two hundred fifty thousand dollars as a round number, bundling together a bunch of different costs and then adding more just to be safe. The idea is we have some expected costs that are associated with reopening and getting back on campus to the maximum extent possible in the fall for on-campus teaching and learning. And then we have some unexpected costs that we don't know what they'll be, so we want to be prepared for them. We don't want our four million dollars to sit there and not work for us to get our school renewed. That's sitting in the bank. Now, we need the reserve. We're not just going to go deplete it, of course. But we want to make sure that the funds are available and that we can go ahead and bring on additional staff for extra tutoring. Or we have additional social worker in mind to do some house calls and locate people who've moved. Deal with the horrific attendance numbers that we'll talk about soon. So we have that all lined up. We will have on-campus learning support providers that may continue additional summer, summer work. So all these like individual, individualized student interventions, many of them come with a price tag and then technology as well. So there may be some capital things that we purchased that would not be part of this budget. But like more Chromebooks to do home Chromebook learning and school Chromebook learning. Or more things like the Promethean boards, so that we may need those if we're going to have some hybrid rooms where teachers are teaching kids, but they're also projecting to Zoom kids at home. So we can have that using an interactive whiteboard, which we already have purchased a few of those as a pilot that were going to happen before the pandemic hit. But now we may do more of that, same one in each grade. Continuing to use things like Zoom and Xeran and Lexia, which are, you know, online platforms that we pay for that, you know, aren't, aren't expensive in the grand scheme of things, but then dollars add up. So that's going to be a good twenty-five thousand dollars if we go all the way with it, which we may not have to. Is there anything else you want to say, Doug, about this budget? Anybody from the finance committee and then just general comments?
No, I just, I just wanted to point out the revenues. We, the approach that we took with the revenues were a more conservative approach. You know, the expenses were a little, you know, we dug really hard into the expenses to, you know, hopefully represent what they would be and if not under. So that's just really it. Lastly, we, we did not cut any benefits or any, any positions to make this happen.
Anybody from the finance committee want to weigh in on exactly my question?
Yeah. And I guess to also include, we, again, we would proud ourselves by saying we was also able to offer our staff the yearly increase that we have year-over-year. Just to make some quick highlights, most schools were not able to do that last year. Some are looking that they still might not be able to do that this year. And that, that's a part of retention.
Anybody from the finance committee want to comment? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I think general comments from board members and questions, so that the finance committee can come back in the next month and do any work we need to do on the budget before we can look at it again to prove it in May. It's due June thirtieth, but we want to be, get ahead and approve it in May. But again, let me just say one more thing. The general concept, just to make sure, is that we have a balanced budget. But then on top of that, we layer on this additional expenses that we approve as a fail-safe for pandemic.
So Steve, how are you modeling for where we are presently with enrollment? And, you know, I know we haven't had that discussion yet, but that's kind of weighing heavily on my mind.
Sure. So there are different scenarios that are not shown here. And I think in the next month, we'll also see, we'll see a lot more data about enrollment and whether things pick up or not, which we should see some changes. She sees growth. We will share those other scenarios with board members if they want to see it and look at it. And I think we need to get maybe a little more detailed about the, the kind of worst-case scenario. Like what's the, I don't know if we have a crash and burn worst-case scenario, Doug. I know that our, our ninety-two percent is pretty conservative. That's, that would be much lower than we've ever been. That'd be a lot fewer kids. But, you know, we could possibly go even lower and then talk about whether any cuts we want to make or would we do in the name of renewal? Would we do a one-time, you know, dip into the reserve and see what that dollar amount is? And I'll say one more thing, and that is that the state of enrollment right now is, it's not good. It's not actually that different than a year ago. So just to make that point.
Steve, well, we have a pretty good idea of enrollment prospects when we actually have to stamp the budget.
Yep. We'll have better, much better sense in May. But we have, we have data now, but it's, we're, we're going through the process now and making live offers and people advancing through the process. So we'll get a sense of who's serious, but come.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on, please.
I was on cue. I just had one quick question. Can we, when we look at this again, can we get a twenty-one, twenty-two side-by-side?
Yes, uh, we have that already. What we wanted to do is just preview this now because it's getting a little late. Last year, we had the budget approved in the April meeting. So I just wanted to get something out as we, you know, putting the final tweaks on these things. But yes.
Okay, great. And then just to be clear, the summer, does the summer between the academic years fall? Let me rephrase it. Does summer twenty-twenty-one fall within the twenty-twenty-one budget or the twenty-twenty-two?
It falls in a twenty-twenty-two budget. However, we accrue, it's almost net zero because we accrue expenses for the year prior. So it just kind of like carries backwards, if that makes any sense.
Got it. And then, sorry for all the question. One more question. I know that we're getting sign-off from the appropriate consultant with respect to our PPP loan forgiveness. Is there, is this all the determination fully retroactive? Or could potential end-of-year attrition affect any of that forgiveness?
The forgiveness is based on nothing related to students or staff of this year. It was about last year. So we kept and we also added more staff. From the email that I got, that our consultant wanted me to addition, just basically pad our payroll a little bit more just in case they decided to pass a raise, pass out some, some items that they wanted to. So we're submitting for more. So I would say I'm a hundred percent sure that at this point, we're going to get it approved.
Got it. Okay.
Just add one more item if I might. Doug, when we, can you give us that comparative, that twenty-one, twenty-two comparative for the finance committee meeting? The executive committee meeting, so we can see it before the next board meeting?
Absolutely. The finance committee is in receipt of it. So we looked at it last, actually yesterday.
You know, I think it'd be good, if I don't mind, Doug, for interrupting. Why don't we send out, and we can work on this by the end of this week, to the whole board? We can send this same information with the other prelim scenario, the like lower enrollment and the comparisons to last, to last year.
Sounds good. Please do.
It's pretty detailed. So I would also say if there's any questions, direct, you know, definitely give me, I don't know where they can hear me.
We can hear you, John.
Right, finally. I've been struggling to, we had to call back in a couple of times. Okay, go, go ahead, Fred.
John, you had a question?
Well, I want you to finish. I was going to make some observations that, that's.
No, go ahead.
I mean, just for the board members in general, the four forty-five you see on that, on the one page, when you compare it to the four seventy-one on the next page of the board materials. I understand that the thirty-seven pre-K is not included.
Correct.
In the four forty-five. Okay, so I would, I, I, I think that while the budget has salary increases, I would not be going out salary increases until we have a much better view on enrollment. And if, and if we could line things up, it would be great to not have gone salary increases until such time as we actually know about that confirmed beyond any doubt on the PPP forgiveness. I don't think we really have visibility, complete confidence PPP forgiveness, but it seems highly likely. And so if a push comes to shove, we could maybe do increases prior to that, but I would not do increases until we had enrollment very much locked down.
Well, that cat's out of the bag. We've already, we're in offer letter season and we made offers with increases to staff members. And I honestly think if we didn't do that, we might face attrition and needlessly so. So, you know, it's.
Yeah, but my, Steve, my understanding was that that increases at charter schools are not that, that we'd be, increases that we're going to offer would be outside the norm of the charter school.
And different schools are different things. Yeah, we heard stories like that last year. The schools that we work with, we generally heard, we heard a lot of stories about schools staying flat a year ago. But we generally heard that they've stuck to their pay scale as closely as possible. Once the four and a half percent increase came in, then there's, I don't, I don't know what schools are not providing an increase. You said you heard about that, Doug. I'm not sure. But it feels like the norm is, is back to, you know, everyone's doing the, the regular increase. Have you heard specific schools?
No, I'm on a call on a nineteenth about that. But I, I'm, I mean, talking to like two of my other friends, it's, it's a mix.
I would say that the, the teacher hiring, I mean, without getting into personal details for staff members, the teacher hiring landscape is competitive and it's no less competitive than it has been. And I think we'd be in a less than favorable position if we didn't offer the increases.
Steve, I might have missed it. But is the per people funding amount being raised this year?
It is. It's going up four, four and a half percent.
Four and a half percent. Okay.
Yeah, we were of the, in, at the end of March, we were of the mindset that we were looking at a zero increase budget. At that time, we were anticipating, you know, how are we going to make this work and do increases and didn't see how it could work. But the four and a half percent changed everything.
Yeah, except enrollment, enrollment, enrollment.
Agreed. Absolutely.
On enrollment, Steve, I sent you an email. I was asked to be on another board for preschool and I'm thinking about joining it so I can try and direct students and parents to our school.
I think that's great. Yeah, all for it.
Go for it, John.
I will.
Joined several boards. Okay.
I'm on enough.
Any more comments? We can move on, please. Thank you, Doug.
Okay. So what you don't have here, this is the dashboard. You don't have projections yet. The projections show that there are vacancies in every grade. It's super conservative. So these numbers really are not important. I think if the executive committee will be getting the projections starting this week. They're based on a very conservative estimation of which kids will return. A very conservative estimation of which kids will enroll who are in the pipeline. And you have no consideration yet of holdovers, although that's part of the picture as well. And that actually may help enrollment a little bit. Although, let's see, we don't use that as a consideration. The projections show that there are more pre-K and kindergarten vacancies than there were a year ago, but very similar vacancies than, than compared to a year ago in grades of one through five. If you remember, we had grades of one and two had about ten seats. Right now, ten, eleven seats. So we're similar to that in grades of one and two in terms of where we were a year ago. And in third grade and fourth grade, we actually have fewer vacancies projected than a year ago. So pre-K and K is really the focus and pre-K is, you know, less of a, of a priority in the sense that there's less per people funding and there are fewer seats to fill. So kindergarten is, you know, as it has been in most years, that we have been any enrollment issues, has been squarely the focus. And that allows us to really target our, our efforts. So I guess comments, questions, and then I can describe a little more about what we're doing with enrollment.
Steve, that one oh two of applications, are you saying that was comp, um, excuse me, the eighty applications in K is considerably lower or is that about what it has been in previous years?
It's lower. I mean, it's much lower than it was, let's say, five years ago. Or seven years ago, which I think was the peak. It's incrementally lower than it was a year ago.
What do you mean?
I'm not sure of the exact number. Yeah, something like twenty percent lower. But it's, you know, we're, I, I believe we were over two hundred in kindergarten alone or in our peak years, maybe three hundred even in peak years. So yeah, there's a lot of hand wringing about, you know, loss of people in the city and people leaving the city. I do know that the applications are down citywide. I don't have exact data on that among charters. It doesn't seem like we have good solid data to rely on for what, what that looks like. There's also a trend that birth rates have been coming down the last five years. So that's, that's hitting now, but I think that probably is a small part of the issue. The data are telling us that, you know, we have, like I said, fewer kids in, particularly in kindergarten and pre-K enrolling. And, but the trend for our school has been on a downward trajectory. So I, I think that there's much more that is in our control that we have not been doing in the last few years, that we have done well in the past, that is now going to come back, that will still be applicable in the pandemic. We're definitely reaching out and trying to get data. There's not a lot out there, but working with the charter center, working with the schools to find out, you know, what are you seeing? What are your numbers? It's a sensitive thing. It's not, not every school's going to share, but you know, we have some colleagues who are very open about their books. And they're focused, but nobody's saying that I've heard, yeah, we're worried about the bottom falling out. We're worried about there being no kids because, you know, we don't know where the kids all went. So I don't think that's happening in demographically in the city. The types of things that I'm talking about that we used to do that we don't do as well anymore are the, really the work of the outreach committee. Okay, I'm sorry. Give me just one sec. Just an example of, two examples of things that we're starting to do now is just the partnerships and working with organizations. John was on the Harlem Congregations for Community Improvement, community meeting this morning. I know it was a small meeting and that, but I heard that they recognize you and they were like, oh, that's John Rick. Yeah, we just, we were now deploying people and sending people out to go to all these community meetings. In the early years, Margaret and I and John were the ones who went to pretty much all the meetings, but now we have a bigger team. And as we've delegated, we haven't been doing as much of that community work, but now we're starting to do more of that. Going to the community board meetings, the health, education, youth and education committee meetings, CEC meetings, making our presence known. We're going to do a second mailer. The mailer is going to focus on the coronavirus testing that we're doing. We're doing free COVID testing for the community every Monday afternoon, which we think is, you know, going to be a boon for our enrollment because it's going to bring people to our building. Hopefully, it just won't just bring sick people. It'll bring everybody to the building, anybody who wants to get tested. And then the last thing is building better relationships with the people who are in the pipeline. So we used to do this well when we were. building better relationships with the people who are in the pipeline. So we used to do this well when we were smaller. And now, you know, the school's gotten big and I wouldn't say bureaucratic, but there are more layers of people doing this work between myself and Margaret and parents. And we used to have this kind of natural entrepreneurial relationship building approach. So we're institutionalizing that now. Just an example is I'm, I've taken over the recruitment work from Alejandro. He partners with me, but I'm now leading the meetings. And last week we had the first meeting that I led and I started with, here's a photograph and a few words about Michaela. Michaela is the first kindergartner for next year to complete all the paperwork. And we've learned that Michaela is a spunky and rambunctious five-year-old who loves to dance and sing. And a few things, all I did was reach out to the mom and say, hey, tell me a photo. Tell me a few things. Our staff wants to get to know you. And as she had done that with a previous parent too, who turned out it was the wrong birthday and the child wouldn't, can't enroll till next year. But she wrote back and she said, I'm really sorry I can't enroll yet because, you know, to receive a text like this is really special. It's the kind of thing we used to do just naturally. And now we're, we're taking steps to institutionalize it. So for every new child that enrolls, we're going to have this conversation now and a schedule of things that we're doing throughout the summer. We used to send mailings. We used to invite them to the school to come in special events. We used to send them swag. And all, one by one, those practices fell away over the years just because of momentum. So we're, we're going to use the word of mouth and focus on the families who are already invested. Current families and the new ones coming in to spread the word in their community with their friends, because that's how people enroll. You know, they, they enroll in groups. I know that as a parent myself, you know, where, where's your kid going? What do you think? How did that go? You know, what is, what did the principal say? Well, the principal at my school has already gotten Michaela's photograph and and our staff, their staff is excited to meet her. They can't wait and they love that she's rambunctious, you know, to hear that response. So there's a combination of, you know, we're doing more advertising in the mailing and that's like kind of critical stuff to get the name out there, but the relationship building, I think, has been a missing link. And I think that's going to be a force multiplier for us. The data will tell us though in the coming weeks. John, do you want to add anything or anybody else in the staff?
Well, I've been reaching out to a couple of different organizations from an organization called WEAC to the meeting you sent me to this morning. And it's been very positive. WEAC possibly, if we can coordinate it, would do a voter registration in our yard, especially for New York City NYCHA residents, which is a large population because we have three different housing developments around us. King Towers, Johnson Houses, and there's another one. I forgot which one the other one is, but it would definitely increase our, you know, numbers when it came to students.
So there's nothing else that I can say except to show the data. So, you know, we'll be doing that over the weekly basis. When I get the updates, which come out on Wednesdays, I'll share them with the executive committee. And our team meetings are right now happening on Thursdays. That may shift in the future too, though.
John, Steve, what do you think would help it all if, for instance, I as chairman of the board, when you send a text, if I send a text to?
That'd be overkill.
Okay.
Let me think about how, how you could, you could support the effort though.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, if you know what class it is going to go into, having the teacher call.
That used to be part of it and we will, we absolutely will do that. Yep.
And maybe even speak to the kid, you know what I mean? And now that zooming is more, is, and now zooming is more common, maybe, you know, have a ten-minute zoomie with the kid.
Yeah, that might work. We definitely want to try to find whether it's a, a class or a special event to invite new families to as well. It's hard to do that in Zoom harder than you think because you know, every, everything you do, it's hard to, it's awkward to be a student in a class on Zoom and not know what's going on. So I'll just put it that way. So we're trying to find like.
No, I agree. No, I was talking about why I so much as what, you know, what I want to teach. Anyway. Yeah, we just say ten minutes to get a, say hi to the teacher.
That's a great idea. Okay, any last comments?
Okay, Steve, that sounds nice and aggressive. Keep it up, please. It's really critical.
Okay, so the key thing is data that I can, that I will promise and you will get from me about what the projections say. Okay. And it's, it's not pretty right now, but it, it has to get prettier. Okay. The development committee has been, been more active lately and I think I can just summarize if Josh, you want to add anything or Ken, just summarize by saying, you know, we have, we have some grants in the door and we're looking to do some more, one more initiative by the end of the year. And we're also starting to retool a little bit in this pandemic by looking at how our process and materials and resources for writing grants and how we've organized things. And also been focusing on major donors. And we've done a little bit of that, but you know, working with some of the board members on who are the people that you would like to bring into the school and have us connect with. Much better to do it in person, of course, but that will, will be coming in the next year. And I want to say one more thing from development committee, which is Ken has secured as a fabulous graduation speaker, who is, I guess you could say a Hollywood personality named Beanie Barnes, who was a Harlem stake as well. So Ken and Josh, do you want to add anything?
That's pretty much it. It's all there. Thank you very much for summarizing, Steve.
All I would, would say is that, you know, we did have a, a really in-depth conversation about systematizing everything as it relates to development, particularly around grant writing. And this will be a school-wide effort. And it will come from the top down and this will allow us to be far more nimble and far more laser-focused in our asks, whether they're to potential major gifts or foundations. So that is the development committee, Pete and I have been, you know, committed to seeing the screw and that is a, we think one of the most important summer projects that the school will undertake.
Thanks, Ken.
Josh and I are starting our follow-up on that tomorrow, as it turns out. I'm excited about it. Bringing back things like the logic model that we used to use and, you know, dusting off some old practices. To be more strategic and give Josh more support. Okay, so outreach, I think this is a golden time for you to say to the board what the best way is to share their Harlem connections in terms of institutions and anything you'd like to summarize in the meeting that we had as well.
Hi, everyone. So I think the best way to share, I, I would think at this point would be to direct mail, email to me, and then I can put them into a document that we can all share and see. Hopefully create a cohesive-looking table. And then in terms of the committee, I mean, I think you cover a lot of what is already happening. So I think Steve and, and the school team is doing a wonderful job of following up with what we talk about at the monthly meeting and moving things forward in terms of enrollment. They're very keen on, on the outreach and tweaking it and making it better. So I think that's going really well. And then the next meeting that we're having is going to be a little bit more focused on really creating the school-wide plan that involves the board and the separate plan for the school. And I think Steve already has a lot of those pieces for his plan. And now, you know, the, the core team of the committee needs to, to really solidify what the board outline will be. And then, you know, perhaps by not May, not June, maybe the July meeting will have something to share, if not, if not before.
Boyka, I'm impressed by what I see here in the minutes and, and I'm, I'm very eager to, to hear what you have to say. So if you can, because I think it's really critical to our assaulting our major problem of enrollment and so forth. And, and in, in addition to the other things we've always talked about, we hope you and your group will be able to do. So I guess all I can say is the sooner the better. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so when we, I'm sorry, I'm just seeing a couple of folks that joined the meeting. Johnny, you still here? Because there are three of you in the waiting room. I'll let you in if you're not there. John Barrett?
Yeah, I'm here now. I'm here.
Okay, I won't let you in then since you're already here. Okay, a lot going on with outreach. As you can see, it's like super busy and super exciting. Let's talk education committee. So I've got a few slides to share and others in the committee can definitely add context. The focus of this, these slides is exclusively on our F and P data. So F and P is one of our accountability metrics. It is, it's Patterson-Pennell. It's a benchmark reading assessment. We give it three times a year. It gives us a ballpark figure of like where students are in their reading level, how it tells us how hard of a book a text gradient a student can handle with their fluency and comprehension. And we give it one-on-one to every student. We weren't sure when we went remote, whether we'd be able to administer it, but we've been able to pull it off. So just to, just to give the assessment is like a Herculean task. And in the fall, that was our big headline. Like we gave the assessment. It was so exciting. The big headline for the winter or, you know, late winter, early spring round is the round two has been that we've seen growth that makes us feel good about growth and that we were able to predict pretty accurately what learning loss has happened during COVID. So let me take you through that with a couple of slides. Here you see two bars, blue and orange, and they actually say different things. The blue tells you not only about a year ago where we had just completed the F and P when the pandemic hit. So this is data from being on campus. And the orange tells you which percentage of kids have met the benchmark in each grade for this year, but with a lower expectation. We reduced, before the year started, we reduced the benchmark just for ourselves internally by one level in each grade to account for learning loss in the pandemic. So that we could adjust our thinking and not see numbers that were so far gone and off the charts that we couldn't know how to respond. So it gave us a sense of normalcy and momentum. Acknowledging that we have kids, you know, forty percent of our kids aren't showing up at least ninety percent of the time and a small subset are showing up very rarely. So we have a lot of kids who are, and we have, I'm not sure how many kids, but it's two, I thought two hundred kids in case management. So that's pretty much the kids who are chronically absent. And that alone has correlated. I mean, you'll see that in the charts coming up. But, and this is, by the way, does that include kindergarten? The kindergarten data tends to be stronger this than other grades at this point in the year because the benchmark is easier. But we worry about the data because it's hard for a lot of kids to learn how to read on Zoom. We have a kindergarten in our home and she's, you know, ahead of her peers, but you know, she may be an exception and not the rule. We know a lot of the kindergartners have done really well though and that data is coming out soon. So if you, the reason why the, the slide says the adjusted benchmark predicted the learning loss is that we didn't know what these days, this day would look like when the year began. And we're hearing all kinds of things from our consultants and our colleagues. We're hearing that there are some districts that are only trying to get back to February of 2020 levels. In other words, they've not only had zero gains in the past year, but they've lost ground. They've had summer slump for a year. So kids have gone backwards in their learning. And that's under more understandable in math, I think, where they might get more confused than in reading, but it happens. Kids do regress. So nationally, this, we think that this data is actually better than what the national picture is. Essentially, this is saying we've lost three months of learning because one reading level is about three months of instruction, except in first grade where one reading level is less than three months. It's about six weeks worth of instruction, just to make it very roughly put. So if you adjust your expectations by three months, we are exactly where we were a year ago. That's what this last bar shows. Same percentage of kids met the benchmark compared to a year ago. So here's a difference in each grade between what for 2021, for this year's data, between what the pandemic benchmark says and what they would have scored if we gave them the regular benchmark. So this is their percentage passing or meeting the, the, the expectation. So to illustrate, first grade has the biggest difference. Fifty percent of the kids have met the pandemic benchmark, but only eighteen percent met the regular benchmark. So in a sense, first grade has the biggest need and we've allocated resources accordingly, increased the number of small groups. We've added more staff members who are doing other things to pulling small groups in first grade. So we will see these numbers change and grow. But we're seeing thirty-two percent of the kids.
Are you confident that the divergence in the first grade there is a function of Zoom learning, et cetera, and not the peculiarities of that particular group of first graders?
There's nothing about these first graders that's any different than any other group of first graders.
Okay.
Yeah, or second graders or anything at your school. Yeah. I mean, they're all characters, but that's true in every grade. What's tough is that, you know, these are kids who ended kindergarten with Zoom and it was the, it was the least attended. You know, those, those skills in kindergarten, you know, it's not just letter sounds and letter recognition. It's everything you do in kindergarten prepares you for reading. So socializing, the taking turns, the, it's all storytelling and that's all putting the pieces of fluency comprehension together. So the fact that they spent March, April and May and June, many of them not able to get devices yet, many of them, you know, just no, nowhere to be found for weeks at a time. So they missed the end of kindergarten. I think that accounts for a lot of this, not the kids themselves. And first grade is when the biggest gains happen. It's like the year that the kids, so they turn on the spark of reading. Kindergarten lays the foundation and first grade, you hit the ball out of the park and it's a tough, tough time to be a six-year-old because they don't have the kind of independence and stamina that the upper grade kids have. They can navigate the Zoom stuff all day and be okay with it. So I think it's a real, you know, the pandemic has hit K one the hardest is my sense. But anyway, this chart was telling you like the, the, the board asked to know what's the difference between if the, if the benchmarks were normal, what would it be like? And this is the picture. And we, we shoot for eighty percent. So we're nowhere near that now. The pandemic numbers approached that and we may be able to get close to it. There is also a SUDI benchmark, which is part of our accountability plan, which we'll look at in the ed committee and we'll look at, at the retreat. And we'll see how we're doing against the SUDI benchmark, which is part of our accountability plan. And those numbers look a little bit better than this because the SUDI benchmark is similar to, and in some cases, less rigorous than the pandemic benchmark. So take the blue bar and in some grades add a little bit and that's where we're on SUDI benchmark. And the, the goal is to get seventy-five percent for kids who are not new to our school. Yeah, I'm saying a lot, so I'm sorry to be narrating so much, but I want to just make sure I have all the data here. So the, the idea that I mentioned earlier about growth has been the focus. The fact of growth at all and two-thirds of our kids grew at least one level, which in one level again is a third of a year in most grades. In first grade, it's a six weeks. You know, I'm just giving you a rough estimate. But what's exciting is that in particular, special education and students in AIS, these are kids who get extra attention. They grew at a higher rate and that's not always the case. So the small group extra attention is paying dividends in the pandemic. Also clear, which, you know, not surprising, but the data bears it out, that poor attendance was correlated with less growth. And you also will see that in the upper grades, in the first grade, there was, you know, the biggest challenge that we had. And first grade has some of the worst attendance. You know, the upper grade has better attendance than, than K and one do. So attendance was clearly correlated with with doing better, better attendance is correlated with doing better on this assessment.
Steve, can you at, send somebody at some point, give us that figure of what the attendance is per grade, the, the, the deficit attendance? Thank you.
So we can definitely make sure we, we can send a follow-up email to the board that has summarize all the things. A reminder to email Voica about any Harlem. About any Harlem connections. The budget draft, the budget scenarios we talked about. And. Attendance data by. By grade. Just so we get that help because the retreat is going to come soon. It's in three weeks or three or four weeks. And I want to get the data now. We'll wait till the next meeting. One of the things that we talked about at the ed committee was how many levels are kids supposed to grow? You know, just so you know what one level. Lower means. In grades K, two, three, four and five, the expectation is that you'll grow one reading level per term. So you take the assessment in the fall, you expect to grow one more level in the winter, one more level in the spring. So you're supposed to be growing two levels over the course of the year, but three, if you count the baseline from the previous year. First grade, you're expected to grow two levels per term. So two levels from the from the summer to the fall. Two levels from the fall to the winter, two levels from the winter to the spring. And it's the only grade in which you grow two levels. And I mentioned first grade is when you really put the pieces together and learn how to read more fluidly. So when you hear, you know, one level below and. That's that's the kind of, that's why I can say like it's a three month. Back of the envelope, learning difference. We don't talk that way in the staff because it's not so clean and even. We talk more about. The specific skills and behaviors that are needed to move up in each level, you know, this is certain to go from level L to level M, you've got to do different things to go from level P to Q. You've got to do different things with comprehension. Based on where you are with the text gradient. So comments, questions and Brandy, do you want to add anything or Hallie?
Um, I just wanted to. Try to clarify one point. When you say per term, I think you're, you know, again, you're talking fall, winter, spring. But when you say they grew one level, are you talking the per term or the entire academic year?
Per term.
Got it. Okay, that's what I wanted to make clear. Okay.
Yeah, and we've also looked at some data at the ed committee about how we've done over the years. So. We have, since we started using F and P a few years ago, we've we have crunched the numbers to see what is our like typical growth? How much do we normally for oh, per year? And you know, if the expectation is firstly first grade out for a moment because it's different, that will grow three reading levels in a year. Typically, we have grown each kid a little bit more than three reading levels per year. So you've got a little bit beyond the expectation. By like five percent, let's say, if you average out of the kids. In twenty. Nineteen twenty, when we ended the year with a pandemic, we were below that. We on average grew less than one year's worth of levels per kid. So we're trying to do better than that this year. That's the hope that will be closer to. One year of average growth per child, though we won't know until we get to June and see the final data.
Right.
Dave, what have you done? Any preliminary thinking about? If we get lucky and everything is pretty much normal in September. Is there a way to make this up or is this just going to have to be slowly but surely created over the next couple of years?
Well, that's a national conversation and we'll engage it at the retreat. So what Sunnis said two different things to us, because I don't think they know. Everyone's having saying two different things, you know, the two different things are. On the one hand, you know, we want to have this concept of accelerated learning, which means. And I think this is very smart. We're going to identify the foundational skills at each grade. That you need to be able to have building blocks in place in both E L A and math. And make sure that kids who have any deficits in these skills get extra attention and get that support. So they get small group, pull out whatever. And they can shore up those skills. But not slow down the curriculum. So that's the accelerated learning part is we're continuing to introduce new standards, keep pace with the standards. And we're not going to kind of slow things down for everybody just because we have a lot of kids with learning loss. So the idea is at the same time as moving the curriculum forward. To infuse this additional tutoring, support, whatever it may be, or practices in the classroom. So Sunni said that that's a kind of national value of developing, but at the same time Sunni has said it's going to take us a few years to recalibrate where we are on state test scores. So I think we're all in for this long haul, like this isn't going to happen overnight, but it's going to take concerted effort to catch up on. Particularly the kids who spend a lot of time not being on Zooms.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's the last slide. So any last questions or comments? Pete, you're on mute if you're talking. Still on mute.
I'm sorry, I saw it on mute. Are we done?
Yeah, just a reminder, the retreat is May twenty second. It's a long commute. You can wear your pajamas. It's on Zoom. And it's ten to two. Jill will make her return and leading us through it and the focus is on working backward for renewal and what we have to do now to get there. Just as a quick reminder, we're in year three of our charter. Which is year four of our accountability period. So with no state tests. For two years, the twenty twenty two state test become like really prominent and important for us. We do expect there will be state tests next year.
Thanked everybody for being here tonight. Steve, thank you for keeping us moving right along. I move that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any objection? Goodbye, everybody. I'll see you all.
Okay, thank you, Pete. Thanks to all the board members. Thanks, staff, for showing up.
Hi, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.